Welcome to the February 28, 2022, City of Twelton Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight we'll have one item of agenda maintenance. We will have a proclamation that I'll insert before public comment. And Council Brooks will be reading a proclamation in support of Ukraine. But we'll start off with our Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Council President Brooks.
Grimes.
Oh geez, Council President Grimes. Because I'm staring at Bridget's face. Go ahead, sorry Nancy.
If you'll put your hand on your heart and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council President Grimes.
Yes. And I feel like tonight especially, the pledge is a very poignant way to start our meeting with everything going on in the world.
Sure.
Thank you, Council Brooks, for what you're going to share with us.
All right. Up next is Council Brooks with a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-19.
Thank you, Mayor. And with the World's Event and with COVID-19, we're nearing 6,500 people in our state that have lost their lives to COVID-19. The upcoming changes in our mask mandates are going to happen on, I think, March 12. And that being said, I know of many instances where people are still waiting to get beds in hospitals, so be mindful and be safe with each other. And please join me in a moment of silence for those that we have lost to COVID-19 and those that are suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two announcements. We have two new police officers will be introduced by Police Chief Steele. Welcome, Chief Steele.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If I could get Ray and Kelsey to use the little raise your hand function if you can, maybe that'll get them to pop up on our screens. There we go. There we go. Perfect. Yeah. So I have the honor of introducing our two newest police officers in the City of Twelton tonight, Ray Chavoya and Kelsey Wilkinson. They both started with the city back on February 7. I'll start off with Kelsey. So she comes to us. She grew up on the coast in Lincoln City, went to Linfield College University, graduated. She was a college softball player there, got a degree in psychology, was working for a company doing some work with banks prior to coming to the city. And then we've got Ray Chavoya. He came to us recently as well on the 7th. He went to Oregon Institute of Technology. He's got a degree in small business management and entrepreneurship. He actually grew up in California. He was doing some work with a consulting company that acquired his public right away. So maybe he can offer some advice in the future about things like that. So both of them just went through a lengthy hiring process and just assigned at the times, they went through, you know, multiple interview panels. They started with the city, like I said, on September 7th. And they actually worked here for a few days before I actually saw their faces without masks on. So this is actually kind of cool to even see them here on the screen now and see their smiling faces. So we're happy to have them onboard with us. They've started their training. They'll be going to the State Police Academy in the next few months and then embarking on a field training program. Their training program will last about a year before they're out serving our community on solo patrol. And then they'll both be very visible officers and representatives of the city out in the community, doing what they can to make this place a better place for everybody involved. So we're very happy to have them both with us.
All right. Well, welcome both of you. Welcome to City of Twelton. And as Chief has probably told you, and the officers, our community is very supportive of our officers. We've gone through an extensive community conversation of policing. And we heard loud and clear that, you know, people in the community support our officers, they respect our officers. And anything we can do to be helpful in your job, let us know. We have the Police Foundation, who offsets things that the city might not be able to get for you. They can get for you. So welcome. And is there, you said a few months out till the academy? How far out? Because I've heard they're a little bit backlogged.
Yeah. So the academy struggled over the last couple of years with COVID issues, like everyone else says they're back up and running now. I think, Kelsey, you go in May and Ray, we're hoping to get in in June, but hopefully get him in the same class in May. So right now they're going through some basic training for CPR, first aid, firearms, defensive tactics. So we're keeping them pretty busy right now as well.
Just memorize all the streets now. But welcome very much. Appreciate you joining the team and we'll probably see you at all different events because we have a very involved police chief and our police departments at every community event. You're interfacing with the community and having terrific community level policing. Well, welcome. All right. So next up, as I mentioned, I had did some agenda maintenance and I'm going to go into a proclamation with what's going on in Ukraine with the invasion. It's very much concerning the mayors of Washington County and mayors everywhere. So the beginnings of a proclamation were created in support of Ukraine. That was circulated with our city council members. And I want to give credit to Council Sacco, came up with some great additions to it. So with that, Council Brooks will now read our proclamation in support of the people of Ukraine.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation declaring Twelton support for Ukraine and condemning Russia's aggression. Whereas Ukraine proclaimed its independence from the Union of Soviet Socialist Republics, USSR, on August 24, 1991, and has been fully independent, a fully independent country since December 1991. And whereas Ukraine is home to nearly 44 million people and is the second largest country on the European continent. And whereas Ukraine adopted its constitution in 1996 and is a unitary republic led by a president elected by popular vote. And whereas Ukraine is a nation rich in natural resources with a market economy known to be a high-tech industrial base, as well as having strong agricultural production. And whereas on February 24, 2022, Russia launched an unprovoked invasion of Ukraine, shattering decades-long peace in Europe. And whereas initial reports of Ukrainian military and civilian casualties already have surpassed 100 with hundreds more wounded as Russia attacks continue. And whereas the people of Twelton join in offering whatever support can be provided to our Ukrainian friends and neighbors. And whereas the leadership of Russia has engaged in direct and intentional violation of human rights and should be held responsible for the loss of human life and loss of property resulting from this truly reprehensible act. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Twelton stands with all who are experiencing very difficult situations because of this illegal action. And we join other city councils across Washington County and indeed across Oregon and the United States of America in condemning Russia's aggression. Our thoughts are with Ukraine, its citizens and Ukrainian Americans this evening, introduced and adopted this 28th day of February 2022.
And Council Brooks. Next up, we have public comment. Public comment is opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time.
Mayor, we've had two requests. We've had two requests on the Zoom land, one from Susan Noack.
All right. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. Nice to see everyone. I am Susan Noack. I am Board Chair for the Twelton Chamber. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the chamber. And my comments are specific to tolling and the presentation you just had from ODOT. I've seen that presentation probably more times than I want to count right now. And it doesn't particularly change, but it is informative. What I, my comments that I had prepared before the presentation are now different because I was gratified to hear councils' questions and concerns because they mirror pretty much exactly what the chamber is feeling also. So I, that makes it easier to, I think, to, to talk to you all about how we are reacting as a chamber in supporting our businesses. Well, I think we're on the same page. I would ask that going forward, that possibly as well as the chamber and the city work together, maybe we need to work together a little bigger and a little stronger on this particular issue. Because you both are aware of and we both are expressing the same concerns. For your information, last fall, I called the Wilsonville Chamber and said, what's going on with tolling? And the Wilsonville Chamber, the Twelton Chamber banded together and we reached out to all the Clackamas County chambers. And we now have our partnership or coalition, if you will, of all the chambers addressing this issue. We had a town hall last week, week before, for the, all the communities in Clackamas County addressing the tolling issues. And we have sent letters along as, as the city has and other people calling out our concerns for the, the tolling issue. We, what our biggest concern is, we feel is that there is not a lot of input either asked for or received from our business community. And we are, the chamber is currently working on our own campaign to reach out to our members and address these issues and let them know what I'm finding when I talk to, to businesses and especially in our industrial area, they really are not aware or up to date. So it's our job as a chamber to make sure they are aware and up to date. And being able to say that we work with the city because they have the same concerns and even bigger concerns than we do because you're more involved. And you get more information than we do. So we know how informed you all are and we appreciate that. We, when you express, one thing I would ask when you express your concerns about the retail part of our community being impacted by tolling, please don't forget our large industrial area. We have thousands of employees that commute into Twelton every single day that will be impacted by tolling. We have large businesses who survive on their trucking and getting their trucks out on their freeways every day and their employees, they are going to be considerably impacted. We hear extends, we have heard extensively from Meridian Park Hospital already about the impact of diversion that they are feeling on 65th and Borland, that it impacts their emergency response teams, it impacts their employees getting to and from work. So we ask you as a chamber to our city council and our community leaders to continue to work with us and reach out to our businesses for their opinions and their, their needs and their input. We need their feedback as a business community along with our residents. But we, you know, we focus on the business community. We need our business community testimonials, feedback, stories of what the impact's going to be. So we can work together to get an equitable solution to the tolling issue. Then if you need, if you would like more information on what the chamber's doing or you need any more information from me, you know where I live, it's at the chamber office and everyone has my email. So I welcome your feedback. I welcome your support. And please don't hesitate to contact me anytime if you have questions or input of what we're doing. Our collective voices are important for ODOT to hear. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Basically said there was another resident or?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. The other resident that reached out would like to speak about the Twelton Heights and they can do that later during the Twelton Heights section.
All right. Anyone else would like to make some public comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll move on to consent agenda. The consent agenda, are those items considered routine? They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone on council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the joint work session minutes with the Tiger Twelton School District and the City of Tiger from January 31, 2022, and the work session and regular meeting minutes of February 14, 2022. Item two, consideration of approval of liquor license renewals for 2022. And item number three, consideration of resolution number 5603-22, authorizing the city manager to execute deeds granted an easement to PGE for utilities associated with the Twelton City Services Site at 1,699 South Herman Road. Is there any one of these items that a council would like to be removed tonight? I'm seeing none.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I've been motion a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? Seeing none. Council Brooks?
Hi.
Council Hillier?
Hi.
Council Sacco?
Hi.
Council Pratt? Council President Grimes?
Hi.
And I vote I also. It's unanimous. That moves us on to special reports. We have an update on diversity, equity, inclusion, or DEI efforts in the City of Twelton. And that'll be led by Stacy. Hello, Stacy.
Counselors, I'm excited to be here tonight. I have with us our consultants from SciComs, both Trudy Flores and Lillian Tsai. It looks like they've both turned on their monitors. We have been working with them since about July of this last year. And this was a new initiative for us to bring them in, kind of do a deeper dive into our internal diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging work here in the city. And so they are here to present us all and to present you with an update of the work that they have done thus far.
Great. Thank you, Stacy. May I share my screen? All right. Thank you. All right. So whenever we ask to give any presentation that's less than an hour, it's called speed dating. So we'll be speed dating through this presentation. So good evening, everybody. I'm Lillian Tsai. And I just wanted to give a very brief overview of who I am and who my company is. So we're in the 20th year right now and Trudy is my full-time FTE. And I also have several contractors who work with me. We do everything from soup to nuts, I call it. So we start with DEI organizational assessments. We also do racial equity assessments. We do consulting, coaching, facilitation, team, team interventions, and also a lot of training. We have worked with a lot of government agencies, for example, the City of Beowithen, the City of Hillsborough, Washington County, and also a lot of agents within Washington County, like assessment and taxation. So what we would like to do this evening is to very briefly give you an overview of the work that we've done as Stacy said, since July of last year. So we started the organizational assessment because this is extremely important before any organization wants to start any DEI work because you've got to get the data. And data is going to inform what's working and where the gaps are. So our assessment included an online survey. It's anonymous online survey that was sent to all employees. Also included several focus groups and also for those who didn't want to be in the focus groups, they were, we conducted actually over 21 one-on-one interviews. And at the end of all that, we analyzed, actually Trudy helped to analyze a lot of the data. And we did a report out to the executive leadership team and the DI committee between October and December. So the data includes both quantitative and qualitative data. And I'm going to just very briefly share some of the findings. So the executive summary basically is what was going on, what is going on with the City of Twelton. What we discovered is that in relationship to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, there is a strong appreciation for leadership commitment to and communication about DEIB from the top down, from the city manager and the executive leadership team. Because without their support, any DEI initiative is definitely sure to fail. And we've experienced that in working with many organizations. We found that employees love working at the city. They feel very included and respected. There's appreciation for your mission of serving the community. And also however though, there were some equity concerns that lacked even after need to identify. So for example, you have a really good program that's focused on the Latinx or Hispanic community. However, for whatever reason, employees weren't sure about what's going on. So we needed more updates to that. And then, sorry, it's not advancing. All right. And some innovative programs and proactive conversations have been started. They have a very good program on how to have courageous conversations. There's a core group of dedicated champions that sprinkled throughout the organization. You have a DI committee. And so there's a lot of awareness of the issues within departments because of the populated, because of the DI committee that's populated throughout the organization. There's a good start on DEI training. They've conducted several trainings and also information sessions. However, there needs to be a more strategic training approach focused on level setting. By that I mean making sure that every single employee from the top down has a basic foundational knowledge of what DEIB is and how it applies to everybody. Otherwise, if you don't answer the question of whiffing, which is what's in it for me, you're going to have people who are going to check out. They really won't care about it and it's going to be sure to fail. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Trudy, who's going to share some of the themes and findings without going into any detail, of course. But so over to you, Trudy.
I, excuse me, definitely not going into detail, but just to let you know, the way that we came about coming up with the themes was that we took hundreds of comments from the open-ended qualitative questions in the survey and also the, the things that we heard in interviews and in the focus groups. And we kind of worked around and the themes that came up are those that you see on, online, on the screen. Leadership and communication. There were a lot of people sprinkled around the organization again. Some of them probably that I would, that I would call some of those champions were very interested in identifying practices, making sure that practices are written down so that there are no gaps and making sure that policies are updated and that there's an equity lens applied. So there, there are people who are talking about how these policies work within the departments. And then bias, microaggressions, instances of disparities. And there were a few things that people called out that were also things that you're doing well, which is great. Professional development, recruitment, and then just sort of general other DEI concerns also came up. And I'm going to let Lillian take over again and talk about the findings that we had and our recommendations.
So I recommended short-term next steps based on all the analysis. And by the way, the report is huge. If anybody ever wants a copy, I'm sure Stacy is happy to provide them. We have all the graphs. We have a lot of comments. We have a lot of data, actually more than you probably want to read. However, I know that some people are very data-centric. So anyway, so I recommend that short-term, the next steps are really to develop and communicate a strategic action plan to identify the goals, the strategies, the key performance indicators, and also very importantly, accountability to identify some of the owners. And so what we did is we have actually assembled, well, the city has assembled a team. I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. The other thing that's important is to make sure that you apply, create and apply an equity lens to all decision-making to make sure that nobody is left out. And this is really in the true interest of inclusion. Consider employee resource groups, for example, LGBTQ, and also Group for Women's Leadership. And also conducting trainings on leading across difference. That's our, our, how should I say? It's our signature program for managers, supervisors, and also leadership. And also the foundational DEIB workshop called Working Across Difference, which is also our signature workshop for all staff. And by the way, this has been with identified dates in April and May for that. And then further down the road, of course, you can't do all the training all at once. Nor should you, because folks need to have time to let the data sink in, to be able to practice some of the skills that we'll be teaching in these workshops. So understanding the history of racism here in Oregon and also the xenophobia that's happening with a lot of actually the Asian community around the country and also here in Oregon. And very importantly, because a lot of unconscious bias and microaggressions were identified in the assessment, it's, it'll be very important for folks to know exactly how to identify them, understand the underlying messages to them, and then know exactly how to respond to them, whether you are a target bystander. I call those upstanders because bystanders just stand by, upstanders actually do something. They stand up and do something. And also if you're an inadvertent offender. So long-term, we recommend that you institutionalize DEI. And this is not, this is done while the short-term program is going on. Sorry, I've been training all day. It's really to be able to understand what is the DEI vision, the mission and the goals for, for the City of Twelton. And what does it mean for everybody moving forward? This is so important so that every single person understands, like I said before, what's in it for me. And to be able to embed the DEI strategic plan into your overall city's strategic plan. And very importantly, to be able to communicate this both internally and then eventually externally with a coordinated, coordinated strategic communications plan. And the other things really are, are pretty things that you would expect to happen with any sort of program or initiative is to have shared accountability where everybody has an interest in it, everybody actually has a stake in it. And everybody, where DEI is a second nature, where it's not something that you pull off the shelf and work on. I'm going to spend two hours working on this today, but everything that you do, every decision that you make is look, is looked through the DEI lens and everybody, it becomes second nature to everybody. And DEIB is also embedded into your employee lifecycle, in your policies, your practices, your procedures with metrics, so you know how to measure them. And to continue that is to develop a mindful DEIB leadership, which means all leadership, executive leadership and managing staff commit to ongoing personal work. Because without understanding where you personally are and on this journey, it's going to actually pitter out and it's not going to be sustainable. I've talked about the equity lens and also strategically support DEI through external relationships. So this is after you do the internal work, you're going to work on the external relationships, outreach, collaborations, networking, building on what you're already doing well now, for example, with the Hispanic community. And then adding to that, the other communities of color and also low-income population, people with disabilities, et cetera. So where are we? So we're now in phase two, which is assembling the team, the core team of three department heads and also three people from different levels. So we, these are all volunteers. And we've been meeting four times already, all in February. And we have been guiding them and we've used this tool. If you can see, this tool is called Padlet. And this is a tool where real time, we can put, for example, they look like little sticky notes. And the real time, we can be adding comments on there. And also after the meeting or in between meetings, folks can also go in there and put updates on there. So it's a really great way to see what's going on real time. And it's a good record of what the discussions have been. We have drafted a DEI vision statement. The, the process is we've all had the discussion. We called out keywords that we all liked. And then we'd have two volunteers go off and write the vision statement and then come back and the team would vet it. And right now the team is drafting a DEI mission statement. So that was just the Friday, last Friday. So the outcome of all of this is to be able to have a strategic action plan. Of course, you have to start with a draft. That's going to be better with the executive leader. Uh, of course you have to start with a draft. That's going to be better with the executive leadership team. And as I said earlier, it's going to be internally focused initially. Um, because it's important to start where you are by measuring the current state and to set the foundation and understand what you're doing before you look outward. Uh, but at the same time, always having the external lens in mind, always considering, well, how would this impact our external vision for DEI? So in summary, um, plans and strategies to address the challenges require a hundred percent commitment by everyone. And we have seen that in states. The executive leadership team and the DEI action planning committee has showed up for every single meeting. And they are very, very motivated to get this done and move it forward. Uh, and so hopefully as a result of all this, you'll have more equitable and inclusive structures, policies, practices, procedures, which then support your recruitment and retention. Uh, you can recruit, you can bring people in, you can be as diverse as you want, but retention, as you all know, because of the great resignation and great retirement these days, uh, all organizations are losing people in, in states. So that's just, uh, a very quick overview. As I said, it's been dating and I'll open it up to any questions.
Thanks, Lillian. Uh, can you stop sharing so we can see each other, please? All right. Questions for Lillian or Trudy or Stacy? Uh, Council Brooks.
Um, I don't, I don't actually have a question. I just have a comment. I just want to thank you for the presentation. And, um, I know I am very invested in our council's very invested in this. Um, we're really excited about the new committee to the Equity Committee. Um, and I also just want to thank the six individuals. I don't know if it's, um, if their names are private or not, but, uh, the three directors and three staff that have been taking the time and volunteering to help, um, bring this forward and bring this along. And it takes a lot of energy, not just the time and energy, but the emotional energy to show up and, um, and be an individual carrying a truth or an ally. Um, like you said, standing up and being an upstander. So, um, I appreciate it and I'm looking forward to seeing the next things and reading the vision and the mission in more detail.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks.
Other comments or questions? I like old Council Brooks comments. I appreciate your efforts so far. And I look forward to see more results, uh, as you, as you progress and working with the committee. And then again, uh, as you're saying right now, you're focusing, you're focusing internally on the organization. Um, and then I look forward to the work externally when we start working with the community. So thank you so much so far on your efforts.
You're very welcome, Mayor. Thanks. Have a nice evening.
You too. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So this, that brings us to general business. We have two items in general business tonight. First item is item number one, consideration of ordinance number one, four, six, four, dash twenty-two. A planned map amendment, PMA, to rezone the Twolton Heights apartment site located at nine, three, zero, one Southwood Sager Street. Tax map two S, one, two, three, DC tax lot six hundred from the medium-low residential RML zoning district to a medium-high density residential RMH zoning district. You recall back on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. Uh, this was put up for a motion and a second to adopt. Uh, it was not unanimous, so we could not pass it that night. So per our charter, this is, uh, up for a third reading tonight. Uh, where we can vote again, it does not have to be unanimous tonight, uh, in order for this ordinance to be adopted. I do want to give folks an opportunity who want to comment, uh, on the ordinance. Uh, knowing that the, the hearing is closed, so no additional testimony or shouldn't say at this point, no additional evidence can be, uh, introduced, uh, but you're certainly, uh, welcome to voice your opinion and give some comments tonight about this, but, um, uh, the hearing is done and we're just, you know, here to listen to the comments of those who oppose it, who are for it, and then council will discuss and go into discussions about, uh, the ordinance and eventually vote. Uh, so with that, I'll open the floor to folks who are, would like to speak in favor of ordinance number one, four, six, four, dash twenty-two. Do we have anyone Bates at the poll center in the Zoom meeting who are in favor?
No one at the poll center in favor. No one online in favor.
All right. Then I'll now go for anyone who would like to speak in opposition of ordinance number one, four, six, four, dash twenty-two.
No one at the poll center, Mayor, but we do have Elise Wilson Coleman on Zoom to speak.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Wilson Coleman.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I appreciate the complexity and the diversity of us getting together with this, um, important decision. Um, I would like to know because we have, um, the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, where the city standards are going to be made. And I wanted to understand a little bit more in regards to this notion of affordable housing. Um, and the difference with that being increased housing to meet the twenty forty demand of that plan.
Okay, but this, this is not really a Q and A. This is more just comment. So we can certainly, you can certainly ask that question and staff can get back to you on that. Um, but that's.
The reason for my question is because of the multifamily housing, um, in ORS one, nine, seven, point three, zero, nine that stating that twenty percent of the housing will be designated for affordable housing. So that's my concern going forward with your adoption to this. Cause I know this is the first in Twolleton in regards to this rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, anyone else who would like to make a comment in opposition? All right. With that, I'll go ahead and open the floor to council discussion on the ordinance. Council President Grimes.
Hi, everybody. Um, since our last meeting, when we started discussing, um, this particular project, it hasn't set really well with me. And so, um, in order to kind of make myself feel better, I went for a stroll through, um, the Twolton Development Code so I could sort of either put my mind at ease or answer some questions that came to mind about this project. And actually what I found was not so much settling as it brought some questions up for me. And I just kind of, I'll try to make this as concise as possible, but what it brought up is that generally the process for this kind of proposal is that it meets the intent of the comprehensive plan as well as the approval criteria for the code. And in this particular instance, for there are more than ten different approval criteria for change like this. And I know we were focusing really specifically on the idea of, you know, we have a housing need, this increases housing, ipso facto, this is the right step to take. But when I started sort of diving into all the different approval criteria and the fact that the applicant is supposed to be required to explain how the project complied with each of the, um, approval criteria, I kind of felt like we came up a little bit short. And if I miss some of these, I apologize because it is possible that I missed part of their presentation that dealt with some of these specific areas. But I think a lot of them were just glossed over because, you know, the applicant sort of came from a position where, you know, they're looking to increase housing, increase density. We had a dearth of housing units. Therefore, we would sort of rubber stamp this through and, and make this be a place where we sort of try to meet some of our needs in one specific area. But some of the things that I just wanted to touch on, and I promise I won't go on forever, is some of the approval criteria. These were areas that I felt like I would like to have more discussion or I felt like the presentation that I saw didn't necessarily answer these questions and they're supposed to, according to our own development code. Um, how, um, how granting the amendment is in the public interest? Other than it increases housing stock? I'm not really sure that they really laid out how it was in the interest of the community, the city, the neighbors surrounding. So I have that concern. Um, how the public interest is best protected by granting the amendment? I think that really fell short there because I don't feel like, I mean, if anything, we've heard extended testimony from homeowners and neighbors in the area that you know, this does not protect in any way, shape or form, um, the public interest. We talk about the various characteristics of the areas of the city. Is it consistent with that? And what we've heard again from our own city staff, from even the owners and the developers of the, the complex and the neighbors surrounding it is that we have noise issue, we have trash issues, we have parking issues, we have traffic issues. Um, all of which do not support or enhance any of the characteristics of that area of the city. Um, another approval criteria we didn't touch on is the suitability of the areas for particular land use and improvement in the area. And again, that goes back to issues with noise, overcrowding, traffic, parking, garbage. Just, you know, urban blight in general. Um, and then another area that we did not talk about at all is property values. And approval criteria is supposed to address property values. We talked a lot about wanting to increase housing options, maybe having workers, um, housing for potential people that might be coming to the area based on development and, and other areas along our corridor. But I think what we really don't touch on is the people that are already in our community, people who've already invested in the community, the homeowners in the neighboring subdivision. I mean, these are the people that are here now investing long-term in the community. Um, I think they have just as many, if not more, uh, rights than, you know, building out housing for potential people that might come to live in the city down the line. And the whole idea of property values was not even touched on in the presentation from what I saw. Um, and then interestingly enough, under the approval criteria, there's also the public need for helpful, safe aesthetic surroundings and conditions. And again, based on the testimony of everyone, including the property owner and developer themselves, I don't feel like anything that was presented to us spoke of health, helpful or safe or aesthetic when we're dealing with, again, overcrowding, parking problems, noise, um, congestion, traffic, unsafe conditions. And I mean, I could go on. There are more. And I apologize because as I mentioned, there's, um, there's ten different A, B, C, D, and on, um, conditions that they're supposed to be presenting us with how they met all of these approval criteria, plus all the little subcategories underneath, but, um, I just wanted to share that. So I feel like we all were a little bit conflicted in the meeting and we all had different types of concerns. And I feel like we all really listened to the people that live in this situation, people that live in the complex, the people that are the neighbors across the street, the people that are really vested in the community, so much so that they made time to either send a letter or write us an email or, you know, join the conversation and, and people that were brave enough to really, you know, put a name and a face that live in the complex. I mean, it's really scary to have to put yourself out on a limb and testify against your landlord. I mean, you know, that's, that's a really uncomfortable position. People showed a lot of courage and a lot of forthrightness, I felt, to bring these to our attention. And then, as I said, when I kind of went back through the code a little bit, I felt like maybe we were leaving the conversation short when we focused just on this need for this immediate increase in housing. And maybe what we should make it is a, a bigger discussion about all these other approval criteria and also what is going to be coming online down in Basalt Creek. And frankly, given some of the testimony from the developer and how they weren't in any great hurry to redevelop this site. I mean, some things might be coming online in Basalt Creek and being built out there faster than this is going to be redeveloped. And maybe the increase in density and filling any, you know, middle housing deficit we have would be better served by looking out in that area than trying to jam it all into a fifty percent increase in this one area that I feel like there's enough factors here that, you know, they haven't sort of met the burden of what we ask in our own code for redevelopment. So I would just ask everybody to just please consider some of these factors in the vote tonight and, you know, consider if there might be other areas in the city that this particular increase in density would be better served. And what it means to the people that live here now, who've invested in the community now, are going to have to be facing if this vote goes through and we make this change to this development and, and the density increase that it's going to bring. So I appreciate you guys listening very much. Thank you.
Council President Grimes, other comments? Council Brooks.
Um, I, I, uh, I think this is a difficult decision and I want to really appreciate the people that have come and shared their concerns. And I'm hoping that a lot of the concerns that we've talked about are going to be take, um, looked at. And I think that there's been conversations about avenues forward around those things. Um, I did, there were a few things and I don't, I'm not going to do too much of a back and forth. But I do want to, um, just because the property values piece is a piece that, um, I think about in, um, in supporting appraisal business. And I just want to say that, um, we don't have, uh, a lot of vacancies that, um, values are rising of properties. One particular, um, apartment building change, code change will not disproportionately affect property values here in Twolton. Um, from my perspective and, um, so I just don't want to be, there to be confusion around that. And, and there's also a lot of situations right now where price, people are asking for prices that are higher than the values that are there. Um, that's the kind of tight market that we're in, and I think speaks to the need for housing in our area for middle housing for people that is affordable. And, um, I've also learned a lot about affordable housing from sitting on the pad. And, um, there's a difference between deeply affordable housing and affordable housing for the missing middle. And there, you know, it's kind of shocking and surprising, but very true that everyone from journeymen, electricians, um, police, uh, officers, all those professions can fit into affordable housing in the current space right now. And it's part of the reason that we have this terrible problem with homelessness in our region. Um, it's a really tough situation and, um, but all that aside, it, this is, um, a code change. It's a very specific code change. Um, and I do want to say that for me, public good is having opportunities of, um, housing for people in our community and, and we need that. So, um, I, I agree with what's been said before. There's going to be a lot that um, I, I agree with what's been said before. There's going to be a lot that he happens at the architectural review. There's, um, parking permit conversations and more. So, um, those concerns are not lost on me at all. And, um, I'm looking forward to seeing existing things resolved and, um, good planning in the future. Thank you.
Council Pratt?
That term public interest is an interesting one, but I think we have to, um, I mean, all of these issues are in the public interest, but we have to look at what is, I guess, like, to me, the housing is the bottom line most important public interest. However, um, these people that did speak, um, I certainly heard them and I'm sure everybody on council heard them and city staff heard them. So, um, I feel that we are obligated to help deal with these issues that were mentioned as best we can. And I certainly hope that the, um, property or owner heard these people and strive to be a good neighbor in our community too.
Council President Grimes?
Thank you. I would like to add one thing, and I appreciate Bridgette you bringing this up because that is another thing that kind of sits very heavy on my shoulder when we talk about this is I do think we have a shortage of affordable housing. I really do. I mean, I look around at what's happening i- i- with the home sales, with, you know, occupancy levels. But to me, this is not affordable housing. I mean, they're talking units that are 1,800 to $2,000 a month. I mean, and that's not even probably a family size unit. And to me, that is not affordable housing. And I, you know, I am a huge proponent of, you know, entry level pricing, housing, affordable housing options, but to me, this is not it and this is not the place. And the other thing I would mention is is that I thought staff did an excellent job of addressing a lot of the concerns that people brought to us about, um, starting with parking permits and, you know, other options that we could do. But I would like to underline, our staff did a great job with that. I did not feel like the applicant brought forward any ideas or, um, took to heart the concerns they were hearing from any of the residents to make any suggestions about how to improve the parking within their own complex, how to improve the street parking, how to improve, um, anything. I mean, we even were helping residents discuss the garbage and the garbage collection and the recycling and things like that. I mean, our staff, I felt like bent over backwards to try to help a lot of what we heard, whereas the applicant developer, I mean, other than them saying it was going to increase density and we had a dearth of density, you know, please approve our application. I mean, I feel like our city, as always, steps up to the plate and takes care of the people that live here. And, you know, you put that together with the fact that this is anything but affordable housing. It just makes me wonder if this is the right place for this type of increased density.
Other comments? All right, I'll just add in, um, kind of like Council President Grimes just said, I think staff heard some of the or many of the complaints from the residents. I know, uh, staff has talked to Republic Services who's been out to the side already and is going to be changing some collection, increasing collection. Um, so some of the concerns the residents have will be, are going to be addressed in the future, uh, when the, if the property owner decides to develop this, if it has to go through a whole permit application process, will they have to be, you know, screened against a whole bunch of criteria we have in the city? They'll have to get through ARB. So there's a lot of hurdles and, uh, steps the developer would have to go through before they can start construction. Uh, where we can get some of these concerns of the Twalton Heights residents addressed. Uh, the residents across the street, you know, the homeowners who are, uh, feeling they can't park in their street, which they show plenty of evidence of. Um, that we said we can easily solve that. That's the easier problem to fix with a residential parking permit program, which if we've implemented throughout the city, where they just address, uh, email, contact, phone, the chief of police or our city manager to find out what the process is to get a residential parking permit program running in their neighborhood. So they, you know, they don't have to deal with the parking issues, overflow parking coming from Twalton Heights. So I'm looking forward to, we can help out the homeowners and we can help out the residents of Twalton Heights if the developer plans on, you know, progressing this, uh, plan into the future uh, and getting through the whole process. And, you know, we'll have uh, staff will have a chance to review the applications in ARB to make sure, uh, some of the resident concerns are also addressed in the future. So any other comments?
Well, I would just say that I, I hear what you're saying, Frank, and I, I really do, but it just, again, it just puts my teeth on edge to think that like our city, our staff, we're the ones that are making these solutions. And while I'm super proud of that, and I think taking care of our people is top priority, I don't understand why the developer and the owner of the complex isn't the one leading the way with these solutions. How come they have not addressed the issues? How come we are, the onus is on us to talk to Republic Services, the onus is on us to help them solve their traffic problem and their parking problem that they have completely not addressed from the resident's testimony up until the point that we step in with the solution. And I think given that type of working relationship and the fact that I don't feel like we even followed all of our own approval criteria, just automatically saying they can have 50% more density and then hoping that it gets resolved through ARB. I mean, that might be able to solve some of the other ancillary issues, but that's not going to change a huge 50% increase in density in that development that is not affordable housing. And I think that's where I keep getting stuck. It's like, we're just packing 50% more people in there and we are not doing anything because it's not our purview, but we're not doing anything to solve our affordable housing problem. And those two things together really bother me. I'm sorry.
Other comments? All right. So with that, uh, do you have a motion for first reading? Oh, Sherlin?
It would be third reading.
A third reading. Yeah. So you should go first, a motion for third reading.
I'll make a motion for third reading by title only for ordinance number 146422, a plan map amendment to rezone the Twalton Heights apartment site located at 9301 Southwest Sagard Street. Second.
I have a motion, a second, uh, for third, uh, reading by title only of ordinance number 1464-22. And discussions on those motions. All right, uh, so I'll take role, uh, Counselor Sacco.
Hi.
Council Hillier.
Hi.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Nay.
For third reading? For, because we're not adopt, this is not the motion to adopt, this is the motion for.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, I will. Yeah.
All right.
Just for title, yeah, by title, well.
All right. Uh, and I vote I also.
Thank you, Your Honor, and ordinance amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan Map 10-1 to apply the medium-high-density residential zoning district to a parcel located at tax map 2S123DC, tax lot 600, PMA 21-0001.
Do I have adoption for, uh, a motion for adoption?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1464-22, a plan map amendment to rezone the Twalton Heights apartment site.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number 1464-22. And discussions on the motion? I'll take role, uh, Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Nope.
And I vote I also. So it's, uh, five in favor, one against. So the most, the ordinance is adopted. All right. So moving on to next item of general business, that's consideration of recommendations from the council committee on advisory appointments. And I believe that's Council Pratt and Council Brooks.
Um, we had, um, applications for the, um, Twalton Parks Advisory Committee. And we appointed three, or we're, um, asking you to appoint three people, two of them. Um, Anthony Warren, who, um, their reappointments, Anthony Warren, who's been on T-Park, oh, since I was on it. And Emma Gray, who's a great person in our community. And we also would like to appoint, um, Mr. Michael Klein, and he is a recently retired executive director of Oregon, Oregon Recreation and Park Association. So that was particularly exciting.
And I'd like to add that we had really great applicants. We couldn't appoint everybody. And again, we just are so grateful that we have such an outstanding community that shows up in such a generous way to volunteer and that we, um, really have a wonderful opportunity to meet and talk with everybody that is so service minded and willing to contribute.
I need a motion to, uh, approve your recommendation.
I motion to approve my own recommendation.
Who have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations from the council committee advisory appointments and discussions on emotions. Right, Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
That's President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote I also. It's unanimous. Uh, that brings us to items removed from consent. Uh, I don't think we had any, so we'll then move on to the next one. Council Communications, the Council Communications. Uh, one thing I forgot to mention is, uh, timing is everything. On March 12th, the day after the mask mandate falls, um, I'm reviving the mayor's coffee social. It'll be at Twalton Community Park on March 12th. That's a Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30, uh, drop by Community Park, uh, to chat with the mayor and, uh, let me know what, how you think we're doing in the city, what's good, what's bad, what could be better, uh, with the city will provide coffee and donuts. Um, so I look forward to seeing folks there. Uh, last time I did was pre-COVID, had some really good attendance and heard some really good ideas. So I look forward to hear more again in March. Anything else? Council Brooks?
Um, I just want to thank everybody again that voted, um, for the art selection for the utility box wraps. And I also wanted to, um, just extend, I know that we read the proclamation earlier, but just to extend, um, my thoughts and prayers towards folks, especially people with Ukrainian, um, descent that are in our community. It's such a very, um, stressful and challenging time. And, um, I just would feel remiss not to acknowledge that, you know, while we're dealing with other very serious things happening. So, um, anyway, I just want to say that. Thanks.
So Hillier.
And to piggyback on what Counselor Brooks said, I'd also like to recognize our Russian-American citizens and ensure that we understand that it's the leadership of the Russian government, not the Russian-American or the citizens here. And to ensure that, um, we are being respectful and, um, understanding of their positions as well. And I'd also like to just note a special thank you to the, um, Substate employees and and the note that was dealt with all the high waters. So thank you for helping us navigate our city.
With the canoe. I saw Council President Grimes and, uh, thank Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. Um, and I would, I would like to, um, very heartfelt thank you to Counselor Sacco for taking the lead on the proclamation tonight. I really appreciate that. Um, my grandfather was born in a little tiny city that's called Jutmir. That is about two, well, a little less than 200 miles, um, uh, west of Kiev. And yesterday their, um, airport was bombed um, and destroyed through, um, well, as part of the aggression of the Russian forces. So I think everybody, whether they mourn the loss of life or the horror of war, I think everyone can find a very personal connection to what's going on right now. And the irony, I think, in my case, is that my grandfather immigrated as a very young man to the United States specifically because, uh, he was in a position of being, um, mandated to enroll in the Russian army for service and it wasn't voluntary. He was, he had had a, um, hereditary exclusion and it was changed arbitrarily by the government. And so in order to escape compulsory service that can be lifetime, depending on what the government says at the time, that's what brought him to the United States. So it's a little bit ironic, I think, in this day and age that wasn't that long ago that that same community was in the same sort of disrepair. But I would like to point out for people that feel that they want to do something, International Red Cross, um, accepts, um, donations and they are doing an enormous amount of work over there and they are trying to set up um, refugee camps that give food and first aid and assistance in the neighboring, um, countries where we have this huge flood of, um, immigrants going. So a great way to help and to feel good about doing something positive is to make a contribution of any size to, um, the International Red Cross. So thanks, guys.
You. Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. It's hard to change the subject after that. Thank you, Nancy, for sharing. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a park survey that's going on out there. And if you, uh, flip your Twalton Life newspaper to the back, there's a QR code that you can scan and take the survey. There's also a statistically sound survey going around with calls and text messages. So just look for, look for that and take it if you receive it.
Anything else? All right. So remember, we're going to go into executive session after we close this meeting. So don't go too far. So I have a motion to close this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion, a second to, uh, end the February 28th meeting. Uh, all those in favor, just raise your hands. It's unanimous. All right. So we stick on this channel. Correct, Sherlin?
Yes, sir. Um, I believe Bates is going to make sure everybody's gone and then he's going to transfer, um, administrative rights to Stacy and and you can conduct your exec session. So it's nice to see everybody.